Afternoon, everyone. Today is October the 22nd. This is the Salinas City Commission Meeting. We welcome you all to our meeting today. With the clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Angel.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford.
Here.
Commissioner Householder.
Here.
Commissioner Shirley.
Here.
With those that are able, please rise and join me in the Pledge Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda today is the citizens' forum. This is a time for all of those that have an item to bring before the commission that is not on part of today's published agenda. Would you please come forward, state your name, your address, and your concern or comment for the commission?
Yeah, my name is Norman Mantle. I've been here before. I'm from Headville. To kind of update you on this water issue, I've been watching quite a bit. The state of Colorado is buying water rights in northeastern Colorado and southeastern Colorado. They bought $50 million worth of water rights. They're going to drill water wells and pump it into the rivers because Kansas is running out of water. So if you're thinking about economic development, you better tell your new people that want to move to town here, we can't guarantee you water, can you?
Is that a comment, sir?
Comment question.
Yeah, I don't think anybody can ever guarantee water.
Well, if I'm going to move a $50 million business in here, I want to know how long I'll stay here before you run out of water.
Yep. Thank you.
And the second thing, you better start looking at population control because that's who's using the water, people.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is John Blanchard. I live at 1117 State Street. And I am here today to give an invitation to everybody citywide about the North Salina Design Workshop. It will be held October 25th, Thursday evening, from 7:00 to 9:00, and all day Friday from 9:00 to 7:00 at the Visit Salina Annex, which is across the street, adjacent to the Chamber of Commerce Building. Some of the things that we're going to be doing in this workshop is image preference exercises and land use exercises. Kind of fits in a little bit with the gentleman before me mentioned, as far as what do we do with population, what do we do with the resources, how do we plan for growth and redevelopment? And this particular brush stroke, we're focusing in on North Salina. So we hope that everybody that's available can make it. And again, it's Thursday from 7:00 to 9:00 is the main, if you can only make it for one thing, at the Visit Salina Annex. And then 9:00 to 7:00 on Friday. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Is there anybody else that would like to comment before the commission? Seeing none today, we have no public hearings or items scheduled for a certain time. That moves us into the consent agenda.
Item 6.1 approved the minutes of October 15, 2012. Item 6.2, Resolution Number 126940, appointing members to the Arts and Humanities Commission, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and the Salinas Saline County Solid Waste Committee. Item 6.3, award a bid for SUV for the fire department to Long MacArthur Ford in the amount of $34,913. Item 6.4, set November 5, 2012, as a date to consider the Planning Commission's recommendation to deny application SP-12-D1 requesting approval of a special permit to allow placement of a wireless communication facility in Indian Rock Park located at 1500 Gibson Avenue.
Are there any of these items that a commissioner would request that should be polled, or any questions? Okay, I'm assuming that we have a fair amount of people in the audience today on item number 6.4 that declares a date for a public hearing. And if the consent agenda is approved, that date will be established as November the 5th, as the clerk read. Seeing that no request to poll items, entertain a motion.
I move that this time we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
The motion and a second to approve the consent agenda is read. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Today we have no development business, and that moves us into administration.
Item 8.1, Resolution Number 126941, authorizing the installation of stop signs on Oakdale Avenue at the intersection of Johnstown Avenue.
Mr. Stack.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a topic that's been brought up a few times over the last few years regarding concerns or citizens' concern with this intersection, and has been further brought to our attention with the Donal Vanir development of the center there. So we felt it was prudent to bring it to you all for, to at least discuss the item. Currently, Oakdale Avenue between iron and ash is offset, and there is no stop sign for Oakdale at Johnstown Avenue. Johnstown is a fairly low-volume residential road, has taken some traffic in the past when the St. John's Hospital was more, was there and was more thriving and had a lot more traffic there, but currently doesn't have a major amount of traffic. We basically took traffic counts, and at the peak hour during a day, you can, you could see 240 vehicles through Oakdale and then 40 vehicles through Johnstown. So, you know, a total of 280 vehicles that are entering or exiting that intersection at some point during, during the peak hour of a day. For a four-way stop, they are not close to meeting the criteria, which is 300 vehicles per hour for an eight-hour period. So you'd have to get into the 2,400 car, basically 300 cars times eight hours, you've got to get 2,400 cars going through there to even start considering a four-way stop. So we don't have any rule MUTCD criteria that say, okay, it's warranted for volume, as well as we haven't had any crashes in the last 10 years due to any site triangle issues or the offset alignment. We have had many parked car issues over here, so this is really weird, but it was more when the, looked like when the hospital was, was going, there was just every now and then a parked car, a parking or backing issue, but it was not related at all to Oakdale and Johnstown intersection. So went back another 10 years to make sure, 20 years' worth of history from the police department, we couldn't find a single accident that had been related to the offset or any kind of site distance concerns there. So we really didn't feel like there was any reason at this time, with those criteria, to warrant a traffic, a new traffic sign or stop sign, basically. Now, arguably, there is more noise in the right-of-way. When you look at the street, there is more development there, there's a fence, there's a new sign that's been put up, and would have been something that we may have been able to deal with if we'd have caught it, or if there'd have been a lot more, if it was a normal intersection, that stuff doesn't, isn't an issue when it's on private property. But in this case, with the offset intersection, it is in, in the way when you're looking north. Sitting at Johnstown, I have some pictures of that in here, so you can see that it's, it's definitely more cluttered than it used to be. There is some site noise and clearance issues as far as that goes, but it's, you can still see through the fence, you can still, I believe, make a safe passageway through there, driving it every day. You don't see a lot of cars that come up there as far as having that, having to make that movement. So, but there is, the MUTC does allow a caveat there if there are site distance concerns where you cannot see conflicting traffic, you're not able to reasonably safely negotiate the intersection unless conflicting traffic is also required to stop. That is one of the MUTCD's criteria for, okay, then maybe a stop sign will be warranted. So at this time, staff believes, this was, talked about quite a bit with staff in trying to figure out, okay, is this a safety concern or not? So it's, it's a little bit of a tough situation to say, okay, we're going to say there's not going to be any wrecks there in the future, but, I mean, there is no history of it, no volumes that say that there could be with the new development. Could that create, create an issue? It could, but we just, at this time, don't see the reason to install stop signs. We could continue to monitor the situation and see if that is an issue in the future. That's kind of the reactive approach. Traffic engineering is kind of that way. It's, they typically don't install stop signs or street lights, street sick traffic signals until they're warranted by some type of situation. So it's just, that's the nature of traffic engineering and installing stop signs or yield signs. So it's, people most, most times don't like that idea, it just doesn't sound good. Well, you're going to wait for a crash to occur, or wait for a problem to arise. Well, that's, that is what the, the national standards have said, and that's what people have tried to comply with, so that's what we're telling you today at this point. Let's see, I guess the options then are, this time, we're not recommending it to be installed, but we can look at it at a later time, keep, keep looking at the situation, or we can, you know, if they installed it, it's not going to cause any major, major issues there. It's just there are, there's a traffic signal a block away and another stop sign a block away, so it's just, stop signs are not something we want to take lightly. So I guess that's why we're bringing it to you. All entertain questions.
Did the request come to the city?
Yes, it's been a cue alert before. We've had a cue alert, which is basically, it's tracked through our city web system. So we've had a cue alert from somebody in the neighborhood. We've had requests from people in the, just that live around the area, when you're out there looking at the situation, yeah, a stop sign needs to be here. So we've had those people come up. We've had the Donal Vanir Center definitely brought up the question at the Planning Commission meeting, and, and then Warren Edgar is the architect and representative for the Donal Vanir Center, so he's asked us to look further into the question, so that's, that's why we have, basically, with the amount of questions we've had on it. So I, I can't say it's one person individually, but it's kind of a group of them.
And then when the center was going in, I remember when we were talking about everything in this location, I remember there was a position of a sign that was a concern as far as, and then a curb cut that was placed closer to an intersection than what the city desired, and, and then I, I remember, I remember those two things at this north end.
The north end, right.
But I don't, I remember discussion down at the south end, and maybe the discussion at the south end was traffic flow, so that curb cut wouldn't have to be so close on the north end or something. I can't really remember what the traffic discussion, or the site discussion was at the south end. Is any of that pertinent for this discussion today, Dan? I know that the center was...
There was a driveway, I believe, down at the south end, two driveways that were eliminated at the south end of the, of the actual property that I think helped the situation. There's less conflicts than there used to be down there, but we, I don't know if the north end, I know that was discussed some, but I don't know how, what to say about the south end other than, yeah, we, if we could have looked back now and said, okay, well, if you could have moved that sign back, that would have helped. I mean, they've got a sign that's in the right, or it's in, on their property and in the way of your site distance, so it's probably better if that would have been further back. But we, we just missed that, and their landscaping was very nice-looking, and that was really all people were looking at at the time. So, but I don't even know if we could have moved it back, because that would have impacted their site plan and how they did their fence and their playground and everything else that's there. So I'm not sure how that would have gone, but...
And so the impact of that site plan, Dan, in this, the picture that we're looking at, the aerial picture, is that one curb cut along the east side of their property seemingly midway on North Oakdale, is, is that the only entrance point on the Johnstown side? And, I mean, is, is that the closest entry point to the facility from this intersection?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, there's just one right in the middle of that. And there's, there were two more on the south side, basically, they just got removed.
And this still looks like a little bit of a construction shop.
Yes.
So I just wanted to be clear in what we're looking at. Very good.
Isn't that also, Dan, the health department temporary quarters along in that area, which will, once that's decided, that might make a difference in traffic?
Yeah, I guess, I can't remember where the health department, from what I've seen the signs, I think you enter off Ash, is that right? I think you enter off Ash, so it doesn't, I don't know how much gets down in this area.
Some may go down there, though.
Some, yeah. There is some activity at the, at the old St. John's Hospital now that are maybe more than in the future, but anyway, it's, any other questions? Okay. And then I would think Warren would want to speak on this, maybe, or anybody else in the audience? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Mr. Edgar?
Mayor, Commissioners, my name is Warren Edgar. I was the architect for the Donal Vanir Children's Center, and I also submitted a letter requesting the stop signs on behalf of the owner, Salina Regional Health Foundation, and the three agencies that are in the building, which are Salina Childcare, CAPS, and Infant Child Development. I'd like to change the focus a little bit from what Dan was talking about in terms of the engineering study that they did, but before I do, I'd like to clarify that the traffic count was done before the health department was moved to that location, so that their added traffic wouldn't be included in that count. Also, since that time, part of the administration, fire administration is, is moved over onto Johnstown near that intersection also, so for a short time, they will be influencing the traffic there as well. Our concerns are not with the side traffic with Johnstown so much as it is with the offset and how that affects the traffic that continues on through on Oakdale. It's a double 90, if you will. If you look at your aerial photograph, the intersections come to a straight 90 and then are offset at that. And if you go through even at the posted speed limit, most people will cut through the center of that intersection. And if they're at all distracted by kids in the car, or cellphone, or anything like that, they're not paying attention to where another car is in the intersection. Throughout construction and the startup of the building, I've gone through there sometimes two or three times a day, and have often had to take some sort of side diversion to try and keep enough space for two vehicles to go through when we meet in the intersection. That's really what is generating the concern about that intersection, not the fact that there is side traffic into it or any kind of visibility issues. I don't think any, any issues have developed because of that. Primarily, it's, again, the concern of the speed of the traffic going through and how you negotiate that little offset going through there. Mornings and evenings, Salina Childcare has most of their activity, the parents are delivering kids in the morning and in the evening. I know that often you use accident counts as a means for determining what you do for traffic control. I would suggest that that's probably not the best approach in this case where we have vehicles that have kids in the car. So I would request that we consider putting in the stop signs at that location as a way of slowing the traffic down and controlling the traffic through that intersection.
Any questions, Mr. Edgar?
Just a comment that probably this traffic study was not done during the festival either, which, which a lot of people go up and down Oakdale.
That's true.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else?
Yep.
If you could state your name and address, ma'am.
We just wanted to comment on, nobody has, oh, I'm sorry, Jamie Crowder. I live in the neighborhood. We're here to represent the people on our block. Nobody has brought up the fact that this intersection is only a block from Oakdale School. We probably have anywhere from 50 to 100 kids, depending on the weather, that cross at that intersection twice a day, every day. We also have Johnstown Towers right there on the block, right next to the childcare center, where there's a lot of elderly people who cross the street. They need walkers, some of them are in wheelchairs. And I have some other pictures that I think show better than these pictures. I was wondering if I could give those to you? Okay. Because I have three pictures here. They were all taken at the same time as I went down the street.
Mr. Edgar, all to the...
There's a, there's a vehicle in the last picture, and that vehicle was there in the previous two pictures also, only you can't see that vehicle at all in the first two pictures. So I think that kind of illustrates how difficult it is to see. Also, there's a crosswalk sign there on Oakdale, right in front of the childcare center, which causes a lot of people will stop their vehicle even though they don't have a stop sign, and they'll try to wave the kids across. Makes it much more dangerous for children crossing the street because, just because that car stopped, does not mean the car going the other direction is going to stop, you know? So I think, I mean, as far as the residents are concerned, we go down that street and we cross that corner several times a day, every day, and we think there needs to be a stop sign there. I also have, I should have given you this, too. I have signature of almost everyone that lives on our block that they'd like to have a stop sign in there, so.
My daughter went to Oakdale Elementary School, her entire, her entire elementary school, so I know exactly what you're talking about.
Our thing is not so much, you know, the vehicular traffic is one thing, but that's all that the study showed. It doesn't show pedestrian traffic. And that's our concern is, you know, there are kids as young as five crossing that street. Sometimes, you know, they're running late for school, or they're excited to get home from school, and they don't necessarily always look, and...
And they're, sorry, I'm Heidi Adams, I live on Johnstown also, but at Oakdale, you know, there is lower income, and not all the students there have a vehicle to go to school in every day, and a lot of them do walk, and some of them are even running late in the day and everything like that, so, I mean, there's just probably a higher amount of, you know, children crossing than most...
I think they have more pedestrian traffic on that corner than vehicular traffic, so it should be a concern.
Yes, and in Johnstown Towers, there's, you know, not only elderly, but there's mentally and physically challenged, and there's, on several occasions, I've had to stop my car and walk someone across the street because they were literally just standing there and looking lost and confused, and it just...
Thank you, ladies. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion and action. I guess I would like to start out by saying that, yeah, the picture has changed a lot with the health department and with the temporary quarters of the fire department there while we're working on number one. And, and I guess if, if I would like to err on the side of anything, especially with the $300 matter, not the 300 isn't important, I would like to err on the side of caution when it comes to weighing out a matter like this, and would hope it wouldn't be an offense to, to Mr. Stack or traffic studies at all.
Mr. Stack, I think you talked about doing the search on traffic accidents, but you, I think you said there had been none attributed to either the offset or site. How many accidents, period, whether they, regardless of what they were attributed to?
Um, 10 or more in the last 20 years, based on parking, parking issues there.
Somebody hit a parked car or something?
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of driveways, parked cars backing out and scraped another car, that's, that's all. And they were always on Johnstown, actually. It's kind of an odd situation, but must have been a lot of traffic there and parking issues. Pedestrian gaps, we feel like we have enough pedestrian gaps for the pedestrians that walk through there, but, I mean, there definitely is a school closed, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The air is sounding heartless. I understand the cost is 300, but it's, it's about driver frustration, and it's about if we took the same evidence, we would put a stop sign on every intersection in town. And the traffic counts are not going to jump from 240 to 2,400 with the health department there and the fire department there. So I think the traffic counts, although slightly rye, a slight raise, isn't going to make a huge difference. And I'm probably not going to win any friends, but I would say no to the stop signs. I think we run a risk of during those peak times pushing traffic back into Island, and sometimes when you've had an intersection that's been like this for 50 years, you run more of a risk of having accidents and backrearing accidents from changing of putting stop signs in there. We have no evidence that there's been accidents here. We've had civilian pedestrian traffic walking on this intersection unmarked for how many years? I mean, it's been here forever. And we're, we're talking about, Mr. Edgar pointed out, he's had to dodge cars, he's concerned about texting. We can't put up stop signs based on the fact that people have been driving improperly. You know, we've got to assume that, you know, when we set these traffic signals up and the flow of traffic, we can't assume that they're going to be reading, you know, looking at the cellphone, or we'd close all the streets down, you know? So I, I think we really need to err on the side of continuing the proper traffic flow and not get overly cautious on a lot of suppositions. And I think that the, that the staff has done a good job in recommending with the low speeds and volumes and lack of recorded accidents that we do avoid putting this stop sign in. While it seems a small cost, I don't think it, like I said, we would do this to every intersection if we, you know, my principal would love a stop sign back on Cloud and Island Street so they could get across. It takes 15 minutes to get across sitting there, they'd love to have one there. I mean, I can think of numerous intersections where a stop sign, every unmarked intersection in town having a stop sign, but we...
This intersection in particular is next to a school with very young kids that are constantly, I drove that route six years, getting my daughter every day from school, so I know exactly what they're talking about.
Sure.
It is a dangerous intersection, I think, I, I agree with the stop signs.
And it's fine.
It's needed.
And I may be outvoted, but...
And even the principal of Oakdale Elementary signed it, and a couple of teachers are on that, too.
Sure, but people from Starlight Drive and Herald would also sign that, but, but the point is...
That's the principal.
Sure.
She's concerned, obviously, too, about her kids.
So your, your definition of a dangerous intersection is some people suspect something could happen here, or is there any evidence that actually shows it's a dangerous intersection?
Kids almost get hit there all the time. Do we have to wait till a kid gets hit, Erin? I mean, I guess we talk about a kid gets hit.
I mean, I agree, but how many, how many years has this intersection been here, and how many kids have we had?
How long has the health department been over there temporarily, and how long has the Vanir Center been there?
I, I mean, we have intersections throughout town where the same, same situation exists. And that's fine, if y'all don't agree, that's, that's fine. I'm merely wasting the opinion of potentially the 45,000 other people who drive the streets of Salina and who would not like to see stop signs at every intersection in town, so, but yeah, I'm one vote, it could be 4 to 1, so.
Sure. Ask Mr. Stack a question?
Yeah, she got me.
Not from there, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, please restate your name and address.
My name is Jamie Crowder. I live at 640 Johnstown. I would just like to know when they did their checking to see when there were no accidents. He said that there were several parked car accidents in the last 20 years. I've lived in my house, and I live, in those pictures I gave you, you can see my house. I live on the first house on Johnstown. It faces the back of the childcare center directly. Five years ago, I believe it was, I saw a child get hit on his bicycle on crossing that intersection, and that was before all of the childcare center stuff was there. And just during the River Festival this year, right after they had the fun run, there was a major accident there. A truck hit a lady's car, and it hit her so hard, she ended up in the grass in the old hospital. So I don't know when they did their study, but there have been accidents. And as far as the intersection having been there for, I mean, that intersection has probably been there over 50 years, I will give you that. The first eight and a half years I lived in my house, I would have agreed with you that it was just erring on the side of caution to put a four-way stop there. However, that was before that black fence that you cannot see through, before they put a four-and-a-half-foot stone sign that's six foot long there. I mean, it, there's, it's changed, that intersection has changed a lot since the childcare center went in, and I, I don't think it's erring on the side of caution anymore. I mean, I, I don't know when they did their study, but I can tell you it's dangerous to cross that street, and so I was just, wanted to clarify that, that we have had accidents there, we have had wrecks there over the course of the summer since they put that landscaping in, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Use the little guy in the back there as well.
Yeah, come on up.
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay. I'm used to me not running these meetings. Could you please state your name and address first?
I'm Jamie Crowder. I live at 640 Johnstown Avenue. I've lived there since I was four, and every day I walk to school, and I have to cross the street just to see if there's... cross the street just to see if there's a car, and my mom's right, you can't see through the fences. And another thing is, there's a big tree on the side of the hospital, you can't see that stop sign when you're coming from Oakdale, you can't see it, it's a big old tree in the way. And I ride my bike all the time, skate with my friends, you can't tell if a car's coming, you have to pretty much cross the street. And I've, I've been with my dad before, you have to take a wide turn around that turn just to see, towards Ash, to see if there's a car coming. You can't tell, I mean, just saying.
Thank you.
Well, frankly, what is most, I guess, sways me more than anything are Mr. Crowder's mother's photographs that she brought in. I'll, I hesitate to even believe that that car was there as you were taking those pictures, because you cannot see a thing looking through that fence. I have to agree with that. Can't see anything in that intersection.
Well, it seems to me we made a mistake allowing the Venier Center to put that fence up if it's blocking the view, and perhaps we need to go back and have that fence removed. If so many people from the Venier Center are concerned about the sight lines and the traffic, maybe we've made a mistake allowing that sign in the signage, and we need to relook at what we've allowed there.
Perhaps, and I guess if the commission, you know, would instruct the planning commission and planning department to look into what was approved there, we certainly could do that, but our task at hand being the request for, for stop signs, do we have any other discussion or debate comments?
You know, just my, as I was saying before, my general fear that if we looked at every single intersection and, and had the, according to some of the other commissioners, the, the, you know, the concept of waiting for an accident or, you know, all of that, I just, I just have this fear we'd have a stop sign on every intersection. At some point, we have to put faith in our drivers and our pedestrians that they know how to operate streets and unmarked intersections. We have, I don't know how many unmarked intersections in this town, and we're not overrun with constant accidents, and they've mentioned a few accidents here, but again, I'm not seeing something that would define a dangerous intersection. And it's easy to side when you've got citizens out here in the crowd to say, hey, we're siding with you, there's potentially eleven or twelve votes out here, we're going to go ahead and put a stop sign up because I'm going to be a nice guy, but that's not why I'm here. I'm here to worry about the traffic flow for everybody, and I understand...
Well, it seems to me it wasn't a year ago that folks from Highland Avenue area came before the commission and asked for a stop sign there, and I believe at that point it was denied because the traffic counts didn't justify it. However, that intersection, the area around that intersection hadn't, intersection hadn't changed as dramatically as I think what has over here by the Dona Venier Children's Center with the fire department and everything going on over there. So, I think we're probably not going to have a rush on people running in here asking for stop signs to be put up, but in the event that happens, I think we have a good track record of listening to the advice of our staff and the engineering folks as to what's proper and what's not.
Commissioners, if I may, I, I think you're correct. The, the one issue here that does stand out is the change in the intersection with a form of a sight visibility issue on that one portion of it. The, it, you know, a safe intersection will have an occasional accident. That's something that you just have to be aware of. To be considered safe doesn't mean in the history of a, of an intersection that it won't have any form of an accident. And we do have a lot of offset intersections, and I'm going to presume we have some of those near schools, so we do probably have a similar situation across the community. I don't think history shows those are the, that's the issue. And due to the, I, I don't know if we've got a speed trailer out there, I don't think speeding is probably an issue. When you're close to the traffic, it appears faster than it really is, but because the blocks north and south are fairly close, I really wouldn't expect we'd have a significant speeding. And I would tell you, when you look at the manual and uniform traffic control devices, which is what you try to follow for these, you never place a stop sign out as a speed control measure. That's one of the things they warn you not to do. But putting all that aside, it does come back to the sight triangle question, and then it leaves it with, with you to determine, even though we don't know if that has created a hazard, it's probably reasonable to determine that it might. And so, really, the decision is, is do you want to put those with the thought that that could create a hazard or not? And I think, I think it's reasonable under the MUTCD because of that sight triangle issue with that offset intersection, that it's reasonable for you to make that decision, if you want to make that decision. Listen, sometimes they're a little bit more black and white, and this one, it's kind of a gray issue, I think, and it just depends on whether you want to wait or whether you want to get out in front of it on a presumption that it could create a problem. So, you're perfectly fine either way.
This was the same area that we, we heard discussions on extending the school zone recently?
Yeah, the school zone is just east of here, so this street is just east of this area that's actually the school zone, but yes, there are...
Were there any stop signs that were going to be changed in this general side? I know we looked at some kind of more on the east side and some, and some more speed things on iron, but was there anything on the west side that was going to change?
Not on the west side, no. It was on the east side, needed to be lengthened because of the property they bought and expanded to the east, so the west side hasn't changed as far, anyway.
Thank you.
Again, my fear is, is sounding heartless, and I sure as heck don't want somebody getting hit over here, and as soon as I would say no to this, somebody will. That's just my luck. So, we're knocking this fake wood that we've got here and hope that, that should this, we not put a stop sign, that doesn't happen. We don't want that to happen, but my other fear is that it's too easy to take a gut reaction from the public and begin putting stop signs and traffic control all over town, and, and we just have to be cautious. We're not experts in traffic flow, we have to look at what the engineers say. They are the experts, we assume they're experts. They've worked in these intersections. I don't see any compelling evidence that says that this is a dangerous intersection from here. And, and I just think it's too easy again with the public out here to have a gut reaction and simply say, you know, the same, the same people that are here saying we need this intersection, I guarantee if we started putting stop signs on their way out home, they'd be frustrated by all the stop signs that they would have to go through. And, and I just want to make sure that we're not up here trying to redesign traffic using gut instinct instead of good, hard, factual evidence that's being brought to us by our professionals that we pay good wages to, to study this for, so we don't have to. So, I just want, you know, like I said, I'm just cautious as to try and become traffic control experts based on emotional reactions, so...
And I, I appreciate you sharing that, and if we, if we do err on that side where there seems to be no compelling evidence, it certainly won't be the first time that we did something on behalf of the city, the community and citizens without any compelling proof.
I believe there's probably just broad comments on this intersection.
Mayor, with all that being said, I would move that we approve resolution 12-6941, authorizing staff to install stop signs on Oakdale Avenue at the intersection of Johnstown Avenue, creating a four-way stop.
Motion, and a second to approve resolution number 12-69441. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries 4-1.
All right, I move we recess into executive session for twenty minutes to discuss a legal counsel matter subject to attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive their privilege and adversely affect the city interest, and move into another executive session for an extra fifteen minutes to propose matters pertaining to non-elected city personnel for the reason that public discussion of the matter would violate the privacy rights of the non-elected personnel involved, and reconvene at 5:15 P.M.
Second.
The motion and a second to adjourn into executive session. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Do we expect any action?
We don't expect, no, thank you.